Going to call the meeting to order at five o'clock. PM, we could stamp the pledge. Adullegiance to the flag. As the states of America, in due regard, we would just be honest, one nation, our right, universal liberty and justice for all. Just for the record, this is an emergency meeting that we called due to three board members not being able to be present. So they're zooming in tonight. So tonight's purpose of the meeting was a back to school update. I can start?
Sure.
So we have eight active cases at Seabrook Middle School of COVID-19 and four active cases at Seabrook Elementary School. Since the beginning of the school year, there have been ninety-two students at the elementary school out for ten or more days. Today, there were seventy-nine students out of the elementary school and forty-eight out at the middle school. So we're seeing significant numbers of absences. Just for an additional data point, we had eighteen staff members, sorry seventeen staff members out at the elementary school on Friday. So we are definitely continuing to be impacted by COVID-19.
Can't hear a thing.
Nope.
This is really not going back here.
Is that any better? Okay. I can restart if that would be, no, keep moving. Okay. Getting the high side.
So guys, this one's still like a link.
There's chairs up front if anybody wants to like move forward, maybe that will help. Can you hear me ladies?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Did you hear the beginning at all?
Yes, until we meet that stop, then we can.
Picking up from there, I was asked to also provide comparative data for the other schools. Hampton Falls currently has one active case, North Hampton two, South Hampton two, and Winnicott three. And again, Seabrook Elementary four, Seabrook Middle School eight. Seabrook has also, according to DHHS, been identified with two clusters, one in fifth grade and one on the school bus. And that has not been the case in other schools. So that's some of the background data that the board asked for coming into this meeting. I also want to say the board has received a number of letters from folks over the last few days weighing in on both sides of this issue. I know they appreciate the input, they've seen all of them. And for me, this is not a political issue. This is number one about health and safety of children. I've been in, working in public schools for twenty-six years. We do fire drills, there hasn't been a fire in a school in decades that has claimed the life of a child. We, we have peanut-free tables because children have peanut allergies. We practice active shooter drills, lockdown drills, things that are also very rare occurrences. We have children in our school system who have compromised immune systems, whose health is at risk due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Some of those families are feeling like they have no option but to pull their children out of school. And school is for all children. So for me, the recommendations we made at the outset of this pandemic were about looking out for the safety and welfare of all children. I understand that people feel strongly on both sides of this issue. I don't take any of that personally. I have worked in schools for the last year with children in person in masks. My school district was in person all of last year. And while I've heard a lot of concerns about student safety, I've also seen accommodations made for children who've needed those accommodations, who may struggle with anxiety around mask wearing. But I have not seen health effects, negative health effects on children as a result of mask wearing. That doesn't speak to all the children of all the parents in this room. I'm sharing what I've observed and the reason that we made the recommendation that we did and the reason that we're asking to re-berge the provision. I just have a couple of questions. So the, the cluster that was identified in fifth grade with DHHS is school-based, they believe, school-based transmission, as is the cluster on the bus, the middle school bus, bus route.
Okay.
Are they related siblings, that type of issue on the bus or? I can't, can't speak to that. I think it is separate bus. Yeah, Erin's nodding, it's separate bus contact.
There might be some relations, but it's multiple parties. Not the cluster in general, that the cluster.
The fifth grade cluster and the bus cluster?
The bus cluster is on one bus.
Correct.
Are they siblings? That type of thing.
No, siblings are not considered a cluster. They have to be separate, non-household, unrelated contacts.
And I had asked today about the number of students that are coming to school masked or unmasked. And it was overwhelming amounts that are unmasked coming to school.
Unless that has changed in the last couple of days, observationally, there are very few students masked at school.
I think maybe we should open up to what we're coming first and then maybe where?
Do you girls have anything to ask prior to, before we start?
I have a quick question. Any average information for how many students have been out from the beginning till now? As far as, you said seventy-nine students in elementary on Friday were out. And then I, I know that you had given us prior information that there were forty and fifty. And so subsequent days, do you feel like there's an increase in the amount of kids that are out of school? Either because they're awaiting testing or because they are positive?
So yes, we've seen an increase in the number of students who are out of school. You may not have heard, there were seventy-nine out today at the elementary school. And forty-eight out today at the middle school. Since the beginning of September, there are ninety-three students cumulatively at the elementary school who've been out for ten or more days.
Okay.
What about the other schools? Are you seeing a trend of kids being out for?
Yes, but not, not absences at this proportion. So yes, we have, we have students at each of the schools out for ten or more days. There is certainly an increase in the region around quarantining and cases. But your percentages are more than double.
Right, but we also are elementary and middle school combined in one building. So we have to take that into account, the number of students that are.
Yes, but on a percentage basis, you have about double the percentage of students out across K-8 as the other elementary schools in SAU 21.
So to verify, we had a hundred and twenty-seven kids out of school today between the elementary and the middle school. If my math is correct. Okay. To me, that's, that's obviously concerning. I mean, regardless of how we feel about masks or no mask, a hundred and twenty-seven kids out of, I don't know, the whole population of the two schools, but a hundred and twenty-seven is a lot of kids. And I know my three personally were out by no fault of their own. Well, I don't know if it's their fault or not, but either way, I think a hundred and twenty-seven kids to me is, is highly concerning. Because what are those kids doing then for school? Because we don't have remote learning, which I get, and I like, I'm glad that we're in person all the time. But if we're going to consider all the things that we need to consider, the fact that we are saying, we don't, you know, we, we want to do certain things, but we're not necessarily factoring in the fact that it trickles down. So the mask is this level, but all the other things underneath of that have been affected, specifically the fact that there's a ton of kids that are out of school. And what are they doing for school? Do we know?
We're providing them with packets and materials, but that isn't necessarily adequate for all children. As we know, many children need support and access to resources and teachers and support staff in order to get a complete education. So it is a significant impact.
Okay. And then one other question about then the staff. You said that there's seven, there were seventeen staff out today or Friday?
Friday.
Friday, Friday in the elementary school. And how does that affect you as far as finding subs or using EAs? Or how does that work out for that?
We got it now. So, so obviously seventeen staff is a large percentage of the elementary school staff. There was a lot of juggling. It does mean that we are not delivering all the services that we typically provide. We are, administrators are covering a variety of duties. We are doubling up in some areas on things that we otherwise wouldn't double up in. And, you know, we managed on Friday, but I would say there, there comes a point where, you know, potentially we would have to close if we were, if we did not have adequate staffing. Because we can't supervise children safely and provide them with education. And we would need to add those days on at the end of the year. Remote is not an option. The state board event has revisited those rules. We're only allowed to have remote in the case of inclement weather.
So what? Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, Simon, you can't safely be on the road.
Okay, so in lieu of no remote, what happens then? You say the only option is there's no school for the time that we get shut down potentially. And then they would then have to finish it up in June or whatever?
Correct, we have to make up that time for student learning.
And you guys would make the decision to close? Or would that be, could, could potentially that be from DHHS to say, you have too many clusters, you have too many cases, whatever? The case may be.
It, it could come from DHHS in the case of staffing. That specifically would be my decision in conjunction with the building administrators. Because we would, we would not have staff to safely operate school.
Gotcha.
Actually, I'm going to ask a few questions as well. Because I think when we're here tonight, it's important to look at this as a multi-tiered approach. And also that it's not just the masks that are the issue. I think we all get kind of caught up on that, that war on masks. And we're all on either one side or we're balancing in the middle. What I want to kind of get some information out of our administration and Meredith is on a few other areas. So at least we can kind of balance what we're looking at. So when we look at other mitigating factors, school cleaning. Do we have the appropriate number of custodial staff to clean appropriately for COVID?
Yes, according to our facilities director, we are adequately staffed to clean for COVID.
Because that's definitely not the message that I'm getting. The message that I'm getting is that we are having a hard time finding part-time staff to fill in spots, to be able to adequately clean. And that seems to be a really big component in this.
I think it was a larger component last year, but we know more about COVID than we did a year ago. Largely, it's aerosolized particles that are the risk factor. So the, the risks of COVID lingering on surfaces were found to be much less of a concern than the aerosolized particles.
So the reason why I have a problem with that is because if we're focusing on masks, but we're just assuming that the cleaning isn't really the issue. I think we need to really take a look at that as a big picture. Because I do think the cleaning is an issue. I definitely would encourage administration to speak with the facilities director, brainstorm how to get more staff in here. And if that means we have to turn part-time positions into full-time and relook at the S3 funds to be able to accommodate that. I think that's something we need to really do.
I, I appreciate that. I would say that administration has spoken about that issue and has spoken to the facilities director. We are staffed at this point. I would say there are not part-time staff available anywhere or full-time staff. We have a number of openings across the SAU in a variety of areas that we are struggling to fill.
So have we hired staff in the last few days?
I, not that I'm aware of, but there are people who have come on board in, in the last couple of weeks.
So I guess where I'm at is I'm hearing, and I'm not hearing third-party information either. I'm getting direct source information and I'm not hearing that message at all. So what would be really great is if we could get a letter from the facilities director saying that he is fully staffed and he can adequately clean. Because that is definitely, I'm hearing one thing and, and we're getting another one presented from this. And if we're going to really get this on trying to do the masks, then we need to look at this as the big picture. I, I would love to see that.
I think there's.
I don't, I don't see saying we're fully staffed. No one's saying we're fully staffed. Adequately cleaning and fully staffed are not the same thing. The staff that we have are working overtime, are working extra hours to make sure we're adequately cleaning. We are still needing some staff.
So that's exactly what I'm talking about.
But they are working very hard and a lot of them are working overtime hours to make sure that cleaning gets done, so that our building is clean.
Oh, our custodial staff are definitely like top-notch stars right now.
No one's saying, no one's saying we're fully staffed, but they are. But you asked about adequately cleaning and I believe that yes, our facilities director was saying we are adequately cleaning because many of them are working extra hours right now.
Fair enough. What about the spray that would last year was sprayed to mitigate the exposure of COVID-19? Is that happening by custodial staff or is that happening at all period?
So it hasn't been happening on a regular basis this year. I believe it was re-implemented at the elementary school this week as a result of the increases in cases. Again, I would say that there is not as much evidence that it's effective in reducing transmission. And it's a cost item as well. We're doing it because we believe we should be doing everything we can. I'm not sure how effective it is.
That's a little concerning to me because I know Hampton, they still spray. I think that some of the, you know, interaction that I've had with some parents or emails, they feel like we're doing absolutely nothing. We're following no guidelines here whatsoever. And I think that's a myth, like we have implemented things. We just haven't implemented masks as a mandatory part of that piece. But to say that we aren't doing our job here otherwise, I mean, unless somebody wants to speak to that. I mean, as far as I know, we're doing the three-foot distance, like, you know, other things, cleaning.
Handwashing.
Handwashing, like, if, if not, please correct me. But that's some of the feedback that I'm getting. People don't understand that there is more to this than a mask. So I guess that would go along with part of Forrest's concern.
We're also, if I can add, still trying to like cohort control. Maybe not to the extent last year across the entire district, but still trying to manage that. And also the cleaner that we use for the spray, we've actually put into the spray bottle. So we're using that for, the teachers have access to that in the classrooms. Replaced our regular cleaning with that.
But I, I just think it's important for people to know that we're not just dropping the ball and not doing anything.
Correct.
You know?
Masking is the only.
Yeah, that's the only piece that I'm aware of anyways that isn't happening.
So needless to say that we have definitely not continued the cleaning that we were doing last year. But we are doing something is what I can surmise from that. Is that, yeah, okay. The second thing I want to talk about, and I want to talk about this because this is a really important factor that's been brought up by our educators and it's been brought up by us numerous times. We have a committee for this, is outdoor spaces. What do we have ready for outdoor spaces right now to capitalize and getting our students during the school day in learning spaces outdoors?
Forrest, the outdoors continues to be available and accessible. If you're talking about the addition of permanent structures, I think it's unlikely to get site plans approved, SIR funding approved, and have any of that ready before spring.
So actually, what I'm referring to is kind of a mixed bag. So it is that, and we have been having conversations about this since April. And nothing is, is happening. There's no movement. I am on the committee that we met in August. And I did print out a list of ideas that were generated from staff that are on that committee as well. And none of those need permits, none of those are structures, and none of that has been moved forward. Learning spaces are, there's great spaces at the school that we've identified. That was part of the committee was to identify those spaces. And we don't even have materials and equipment at the lowest form of that to be able to get students outdoors. Stephanie, this is a positive for you, so I'm not bringing you out here. But you had a great idea with yoga mats when we met for that. And that would be the simplest thing, to be able to give teachers yoga mats, whiteboard markers, things like that where they can actually get outdoors with their, their kids get out of, inside the school. And that's not happening.
I mean, I was here earlier today and there was a class outside.
You actually have two or three classes that are EAs that have been continuously going outside. And everything that they've gotten together, they've provided that either themselves or they've found donations to be able to make that work.
Well, I can say in the spring, there was a lot of use of outdoor spaces. And we made it clear that there was money that, and I offered to purchase what was needed to be outside and teachers were using outside. So there, there were a lot of people using outside spaces. We were supposed to meet in September, if you remember, to walk the grounds. And unfortunately, too many people couldn't attend the meeting. So we haven't been able to reschedule since that meeting. We've quite frankly been dealing with COVID pretty much every day. So it has been postponed due to people not being able to come to the meeting. And that meeting was a really important meeting to walk the grounds and really figure out what spaces made the most sense. And certainly.
I reviewed the survey data, we surveyed the whole staff. And there was some from them.
Quite honestly, wasn't a huge response of teachers who entered it and who said they used the outdoor space on a regular basis.
So I'm, and kind of to go back on that, that walkthrough to identify outdoor spaces in September actually was already done back in, I want to say May. And it's actually a PowerPoint presentation that was put together by Lindsay Hamlet, the SES physical education teacher. And that was sent out to administration. She's already walked the school. She has taken pictures of outdoor learning spaces. She has provided materials list. And again, there's no movement. So I'm not sure whose finger is on the button. I'm really, it's not a blame game, it's just that this stuff needs to happen. We cannot expect our community members to continue to battle each other over masks when these other things that could be and should be implemented and modified and available are not happening.
I don't, I don't disagree with you at all, Forrest. I would say it's difficult for me to respond to that when this is the first conversation we've had about it other than the grant approval for outdoor space where the grant was approved and that has moved forward to the state for the outdoor space and the SIR fund. So, you know, if, if board members are hearing concerns, I need to know that. I spent an hour, almost an hour and a half with staff Friday afternoon listening to concerns. I didn't hear access to outdoor space as a concern from anyone in that meeting. I heard concerns largely about masks, about, I did hear some concerns about cleaning, which were addressed by administration at that meeting and followed up with our facilities director and our business administrator. But the, the largest concern I had, actually, the largest concern I heard was about the safety of children. And masks and cleaning were the two elements of that that came out the most.
I appreciate that too. You kind of, you, you, when you started in July, you didn't get the background information. I think the background information was that we have been discussing this for quite some time. I want to say, you would know that we could look in the agenda items and all of that from past meetings. But when we were going over the S3 funds, we did turn that back and we're expecting to have a breakdown and more money put into it. Because the only amount of money that was put into outdoor spaces out of the one point something million dollars that are coming into the school was eighty thousand dollars. And that was going directly towards the two pavilions. There was nothing on that list about materials, there was nothing on that list about access. There was nothing on that list about any of that. And my understanding is that even the outdoor committee feedback never got to the person who was actually writing all those things and getting them in there. So I'm, I'm saying this because I think it's important for everyone to have the information and to be on, at least we all can start on the foundation together. Because these are also elements that aren't, they're not moving. And if we want to keep students safe and we have the options to be able to utilize outdoor spaces, much like North Hampton, much like other schools in our SAU 21, we're not doing that. If we can get them outdoors, we should be getting them outdoors. I know you don't. I am smiling under this mask, I promise.
I don't, I don't feel like the answer is always just put a mask on, like there's other avenues that we need to address clearly.
I think the problem is, is now we've gotten to a point where the only mitigating factor we actually have any sort of control on right now has been left us with the masks. And that's, that's really my biggest concern. Because every person in here is either, like I said, balanced on one side, the other, or we're right in the middle trying to figure it out. And these I look at as the bigger impacts that we could have on keeping our students safe. It is proven that if you're outdoors, you're safer than being inside with COVID. That, that's a no-brainer. So I don't know why we're not pushing that to really get them outside.
Go ahead, Kelly.
So I think that Forrest nailed it. And I think, so first I would like to say for the record that my opinion is not being forced on anybody. I'm not trying to persuade anybody one way or another. I recently just found out that my children are walking around with the school with a mask on. No idea, never discussed it with them. They chose to put a mask on. And I was told this. And that comes to show that my opinion is not pushed to anyone. So I want to make that clear right now before this meeting starts, which has already started, sorry. But I am, walked into this meeting with a clear head, listening to everybody and what the majority of the vote's going to be. Because my vote's going to be based on what the majority of the people that voted me in want. But what I do want to say is that when I was growing up in that school, there was no outdoor spaces. And I'm not putting educators down, trust me, I'm not when I say this. But I can tell you that in the nice weather in the fall, we went for nature walks, we went outside. We went, I mean, they, it was, it was, we didn't need to have approved spaces with all this funding and all this equipment to be able to get the kids outside. And I feel like that since we made the masks optional, and I'm going to be honest, that the goal has been to get the masks back on. There has been a ton of effort to get these masks back on. But what can we say as far as the effort to allow them to be optional? What are we doing to say, you know what? This is what the board has voted on. This is what the people at the meeting and the residents for the majority at the time voted. We've got to do what we can to make this work, make this a positive environment for the kids. Go above and beyond to make it happen. And then if it fails, come to us. But right now, I feel like that, and I'm sorry, Meredith, I'm just going to say it. My ten-year-old came home horrified that he was going to die because of what he's hearing at school. These conversations need to stop. These kids need to go to school in the morning. If they wear a mask, they wear a mask. If they don't wear a mask, that's on their parents. If we decide to mandate masks, then they need to go in and wear a mask. But these kids need to start having education. They need to go to school. We need to get the other high school crap and gossip and pettiness and plans on sending emails to teachers that the other schools aren't getting. I feel like Seabrook is like in the spotlight since day one. And, and it's got to stop. We, we as board members, you know you can email us at any time about anything. And the only emails we get from administration is masks. We get nothing about the behaviors that are going on. We get nothing about, I'm not going to get into it because it's not on the agenda. I'm just going to tell you that we, me as a board member, I'm telling you right now, I will get out of, out of work and I will come down there and I will chaperone if I need to, I will help clean the school. I'll do what I need to do. But we need to stop focusing on making it better for the kids if we decide to make them optional. And if we don't, we need to fix the morale in there because right now it's junk. And I'm sorry, that's how I feel. I feel like these meetings are always so negative, but it's because we never ever say, wow, we did this, good job.
To piggyback on what Kelly's saying, I think the important thing to remember, and this is for everyone that's both there in person and listening online, that no matter what decision is made today, there will not be everyone pleased, no matter what. And I think that that's important to consider, that we're doing the best that we can to make decisions for not ourselves, but for the whole community. And, and really that means both children and adults and teachers and staff and everyone. And all of us have kids, our own or nieces and nephews or whatever, that have either gone through the school or in the school right now. So when we make decisions, we don't make them lightly. And I think that's super important for everyone to understand. Because it, like Kelly said, we get a lot of negative all the time. And that's fine, because that's what we're here for. We're here to hear all those things. And I think also it's important to know that when we get emails, specifically from not administration, but emails about, like, let's say this meeting, for instance, we're getting it fifty-fifty. And you may think that there's a small majority on either side. But I mean, we're getting emails from both sides. And so it's really, it's not just one side that's overwhelming the other. But I think there are a lot of factors that we need to consider when we make this decision today. And if we make the decision, again, whether masks are going to be optional or whether they're going to be mandated, we do not make this decision with just a casual like, oh, whatever, we'll just see what happens. And I feel like this is important to focus on. And I think it is also really important to think about, like what Forrest said, that there's a lot of other factors. And that also means that, let's say we hypothetically, we went optional and our cases, you know, increased, that that doesn't only affect the individual kids, which obviously nobody wants any kid to get sick, ever. But I think it also affects both the schooling for other kids. It affects. It affects um, SaaS, you know, which is super important. If, if we keep continuing to increase in cases. We are going to have those things that are going to go away. SaaS is going to go away because they can't function. You know, solely in one form or fashion. And then you have, you know, for kids that are, are um, that. Are in contact with someone in COVID. So in my family, in our household, someone has COVID. Other people do not, but everyone needs to quarantine. So that means whether our kids are positive or negative. They need to quarantine. And if they're negative, they actually have to quarantine twenty days, not just ten days. So I think that's important too, that even if we, so if we made masks optional and people continue to get COVID, we have seventy nine students out. In the elementary school, we have forty eight out in the middle school. So if we continue to do this and our numbers continue to go up, that every kid. That's then in contact with someone else. So it's not just one kid. If one kid has a positive test, then if their sibling, they may have one, two, three siblings that go to the school. All of those siblings are then out and they're out for even longer than the child who tested positive. So I'm kind of getting off on a tangent here, but I feel like this is really important. And like Kelly said, we're getting a lot of negative. We're not getting, we're getting it from both sides and that's fine. And that's what we are here for. We want to hear both sides. We're not, again, like Kelly said, we're not trying to push an agenda. It's not our agenda. It's what is the overwhelming um, decision based on all, all the things. All the factors that we can, we can take in. Administration, teachers, staff, parents, kids, um, DHHS, all the things. And I think that we need to think about it from a big picture standpoint. And we need to not focus on masks being this, like Farah said, this divide that everyone and their mother is like. We can't have them, we can have them, we should have, we shouldn't. And it's just, it's back and forth and we're hearing it from everywhere. And I think again, we need to focus on the fact that it's both sides and we're hearing from everyone. If they have an opinion either way, and that's totally fine. But we need to, we need people to know that we're making, we're trying to make the best decision. That we can with the information that we have. And that's why things like what Forrest was asking and what Kelly was saying, those are important for us to hear because. We need to know that no matter what decision we make, that there are other things that are going to be in play here. When we make that decision. So masks, whatever it is, outside, no outside, we need to make those decisions and we need to come up. With the protocol no matter what. So even if let's say we went optional, we need to decide what the protocol is if someone comes in contact with someone else. Because right now with masks being optional, we're, we're just willy nilly like, oh, I mean, you know, if you're out, if you're, you know, in contact, let, let's say. Uh, on the bus, they're already wearing masks. But in the classroom, if you have a kid that tests positive and they're in, let's say a second grade classroom. That second grade classroom is notified, but nobody, they're supposed to self-monitor, which again, we're, we're having kids self-monitor. Or we're having parents self-monitor that the parents are then sending their kids to school, giving them Tylenol and saying, you're fine, it's fine, everything's good. Which, you know, that, that is their choice to do. But in that sense, we're then sending that child who could be positive. Back into the classroom, into a classroom that's already had one case. And then we're just, again, we're just continuing. To let it spread through the class if that's how it chooses. And I know that people are fired up because they say that. Um, you know, COVID doesn't really affect kids very much and these are the things, but I personally. Don't want to have that one child out of however many hundreds of thousands of children. That is affected and then subsequently is, you know, really hurt by it. I mean, I don't want kids to get sick at all, but kids are going to get sick. We understand that. That's normal, flu season, colds, whatever. But we can't. I, I don't want to be responsible for something bad happening because I want to push an agenda either way. And again, that's why I'm saying, we're not trying to push an agenda. We're trying to make decisions for everyone. And we're trying to do what's best for everyone. So no matter what way we choose, I just want everybody to know that so that nobody's coming back and saying, well, you did this and you did that. Like, we're just trying to do the best that we can with the information that we get. So, sorry, that was a long winded thing.
Meredith, are we, so when you have forty kids calling in sick, is the nurse calling back to find out what's going on? Or are we just saying forty kids are sick? Because I know a couple of weeks ago, there was. Certain things going around that are just as contagious as COVID, if not worse. And we're not getting letters about that. So I'm not understanding like it, what, are we getting statistics to find out, okay, maybe this forty kids out because we have twelve. Kids that their parents are upset, there's no mask, they're going to keep them out. And then we have five kids that have a sore throat. So because they went to convenient MD and have a sore throat. Now they want them to get a COVID test because that's the same symptoms. We have to wait another twenty four hours because if we had forty kids out on Friday. Then you and they were all COVID and they got testing over the weekend, then we should have forty positive cases today. Am I right?
I'm not suggesting that everyone was out with COVID. I'm telling you how many students are out and are affected by the. Need to either be tested, quarantined or isolate based on household cases or.
That's going to happen anywhere though. That's going to hap, that, I mean, you just said that there was a cluster on the bus. Do they wear masks on the bus?
The, the requirement is to be masked on the buses. Anecdotally, we've heard that that is not consistently the case. We've been in touch with the bus company about enforcement of that.
So. I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not, I'm just trying to, so if we, if we do put masks into place. Who's going to be responsible to make sure that these masks are on and that they're on correctly? Because walking around with a mask under your nose really isn't going to do any good. So I guess I'm just trying to see if, if. If it, if, if we're having a hard time doing extra cleaning and you know, things are really stressful right now at school. What's going to happen when we have to monitor all kids wearing a mask and wearing it correctly if we're having a hard time on the bus?
So our school-based staff are not on the buses. That is first staffing and we're working on that issue with them. Um, students were masked here last year. I've not heard a concern from staff that that would be a challenge to enforce.
Uh, my, I know many that weren't wearing them. They had them down here.
Justin, can we just wait for open comment for any more comments out of the audience? So in the beginning of um, the meeting, I had asked how many kids were coming to school unmasked versus masked. So every parent is getting these emails that there's cases in school. But there's still a large amount of kids coming to school without a mask on. So that tells me that parents are still choosing to not put masks on their children by a large amount. Or that children aren't wearing the mask that they're sent with. I can't answer that.
So.
Alright guys, 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 you're going to have time to talk. You're going to have time to talk in the end. Please just hold off. On um, outbursts from the audience. Alright.
So I think that.
From you guys?
I had, I had a parent who said. They were concerned that we didn't make masks mandatory, but that she didn't want to be the person to make her child wear a mask because he was upset that nobody else was. So I'm wondering if that's what's going on is that if. If. We make it optional, there's children that are maybe asking, maybe asking to be asked to wear masks when they're leaving the home and they're not. Or the parent is waiting for us to make that call so they don't have to make their child wear a mask when half the other class isn't. And uh, you know, I can see that happening, you know, I mean, every child, no child wants to be that only kid in the class wearing a mask. And that makes me sad too. But unfortunately, as a school board, we can't enforce. A policy. Because of a child and a parent not wanting their child to be mad. And I know that sounds farfetched, but it's been said to me more than once. So I just wanted to throw that out there that might, that might kind of be what's going on Jess. When you said that is that. You know, maybe there, the parents are, you know, more wanting the masks on, but just waiting for it to be mandated so that their child's not the only one. I'm, I don't know.
I do think that there are children too that if they come to school with masks, that most likely they probably take them off at one point. So a parent might say to them, you need to wear this and.
Yep.
They don't, or they go and then they take it off when they get to school and parents will not know. And I'm not saying that that's right or not, right? I'm just like, again, to. To follow up with what you said. I think that that's definitely.
The bus with the mask on, then we should know that they're supposed to have one on, I guess. But how do you police that?
Right. You can't leave that to teachers to say, oh, well, your mom and your mom said, yes, you need it and your parents didn't. So you need to make sure you have that on because that's not their job. And I, we can't, we definitely can't do that. So we need to either. It, it's one way or the other. We can't have, you know, we can't have it say, yes, we can, you can send in a letter and have a teacher tell. Your, your child that you need to mask up because that's not, that's on them. When we made the decision in the beginning for masks to be optional, we made it. So that the parents could choose because at the time, we only had between one and four active cases in Seabrook. And even at that point, we would have been in the red zone. And for us at that point, we felt like that really didn't warrant. Masks mandatory for the whole time. Um, and I think that we also need to just reiterate the fact that we said from the beginning that we would. Come back to this and we would revisit this every time that we met. And if we had situations where we felt like it was concerning, that we would then reevaluate our decision and, and you know. Figure out a new plan, whatever that plan looks like. And I think we need to make sure that we understand that this is not backtracking. This is using new information to make intelligent, educated as well as we can decisions on whatever we choose. And that that's important to think about. So it's not flip flopping. It's. At the time, we made a decision based on the information that we had. Now there's new information and we need to decide if we're going to make a different decision based on that information.
But we haven't, we were under the understanding that they were going to be going outside more often and that the cleaning was going to be at the same level as it was last year. And that's not the case. So that makes it pretty difficult to weigh what was going on at the beginning of the year versus what is going on now when we find out that. I mean, I, to me, if masks are that much of a concern within the school, wouldn't you clean more versus. Decrease the level of cleaning? That to me makes no sense.
Well, I think they said too that the, unfortunately, they're like way over. Um, not overstaffed, understaffed as far as them putting in extra hours and doing more, whatever that looks like. I don't know.
I'm sorry. You know what? It happened. I don't know what to say. I mean, it's the kid's safety, right? So let's clean. Let's do what we knew, need to do because these parents are concerned both ways. So whether we do masks or don't do masks, if that's a problem, they need to come to the board and tell us that. We can't make decisions for them if we don't even know. And for us to just find out today that going outside hasn't been happening and the cleaning hasn't been happening. That blows my mind because I'm pretty sure the last couple of meetings, we have stressed and stressed and stressed. Communicate to us, tell us stuff. And they're not telling us anything, but COVID masks are an issue.
I appreciate the frustration. I just want to reiterate that we're hearing from the facilities director, from your administrators, that cleaning is occurring. Um, and that cleaning. Guys, guys, can we wait? Can we wait?
Meredith, is there any information provided that if, if we chose to put masks back on, that, that anything would change as far as cleaning is concerned? Or is it the same, no matter what the protocol is, is it the same, like we can say that that wouldn't be any different?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear that completely. Are you asking, would anything else change with respect to cleaning protocols?
Yeah, are the cleaning protocols more now with the masks being optional versus what they would be if the masks were mandated? Or are they the same no matter what? Because that's the, the standard.
They're the same no matter what because that's.
Okay.
But we haven't been spraying. We were, last year, last year we were spraying. So we were doing in, in all fairness, more last year. Than we are this year. I wasn't here, but yes.
It makes a huge difference.
The board so that we can start with um, public comments. We have a lot of people in the audience that I think are ready to speak.
Sure.
Yes, it's a three minute one, right? So in our policy, we have like a time limit of three minutes per person to speak. Obviously we have a lot of people here, so we want to. Be fair to everybody um, and let them speak. So um, I guess we'll start from the front and work our way back. Is there anybody in the front row that would like to speak? Try to keep it at three minutes just to be fair. Thank you. Can you just, yeah, introduce yourself?
As far as anything else goes, you want to talk about the mask, limiting your oxygen levels, COVID does attach to fibrous. Tissue within your lungs, um, oxygen is what helps to heal COVID. So you got the immunodeficient kids in the school, fantastic. Putting a mask on, that's how that's going to go through, is going to hurt them more. If they are exposed, A and B, here's a real question. This is a very, very small population of immunodeficient kids. Wouldn't it be easier to accommodate that very, very small amount versus. Using mandating the rest? Seems like um, you know, every school was for every child, you said? Well, a lot of these kids won't be wanting to go to school. A lot of these kids will be uh, their mind will be right up. A lot of these kids will be. So I would think that you'd dominate. Accommodations for these immunodeficient children, especially knowing the effectiveness of the mask. Or if you don't know, then.
Right, I agree.
And uh, maybe find a way to accommodate and maybe bring back the remote learning because again, schools are all children. So some of these kids don't want to attend school because of this, maybe you want to accommodate them. I don't think a very small few should uh, be used as the major um, driver for the majority.
Thank you.
Uh, really quick, can you guys put this phone or a computer over by them? Because we can't really hear whoever's talking at the microphone. It's really far away. Sorry. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Patrick Knott, eight A Whittier Drive. I've got a father, I'm a father of a second and a third grader. I'm writing today to express my concern over the potential mask mandate in school. In the past eighteen months, my children have gone from loving school to be filled with anxiety and anger over having to wear the mask for eight hours a day. We told them, the kids, that there might be a new potential mask mandate. I had one child break down in tears and the other one flat out say that he will not go back to school. Currently, right now, in the town of Seabrook, we have twenty nine cases out of eight thousand four hundred and one residents on the latest census. That equates to less than one half of one percent of the town being infected. Providing our children with quality education should, should be first and with mandating masks in the classroom, we aren't providing that. The hope over the past eighteen months was that we would be able to somewhat return to normalcy. The parents, along with the school board, has already put in place a policy that makes opt, masks optional for now. To make masks optional. And now the minority of the parents is stressed concerned about taking away the other parents' rights to choose and that is what's best for the children. We've given everyone over the age of twelve the opportunity to receive the vaccine. The CDC, DPH, and even the White House has stated that a vaccinated person are far less likely to become infected with COVID nineteen. If they do, symptoms are milder and less chance of hospitalizations and ICU admissions. Teachers were Governor Sununu's top priority to get vaccinated along with frontline workers. All teachers, all adults, everyone over the age of twelve, has been given the opportunity to receive their vaccinations. They also, they are also allowing those that are high risk. They also, they are also allowing those that are high risk or perceived to be high risk or work in a high risk setting to receive their booster shots. Adults can go down to CVS and go get a booster shot. Teachers can go down to CVS and receive a booster shot. The argument that people are afraid of the kids going to bring their COVID home to their sick grandparents and die doesn't hold weight anymore. I am an active member of this community. I've worked as a frontline worker through this entire pandemic as a firefighter, paramedic. I've been in the back of ambulances with people this entire thing. You know, it's a bigger issue than COVID is the children's mental health. These kids are suffering from anxiety of depression. They have lost their, uh, love for school and drive and many times for life. I have seen more suicidal young children in the last three months than I have seen COVID patients. I respond to these people's houses all the time and they tell me that their third grader is suicidal over all the restrictions and lockdowns. I've coached many kids in this town and I speak with many groups of parents all the time. The majority of the parents want to maintain the option of masking or not. I spoke with, uh, Principal, uh, Stephanie LaFreniere and she told me on Monday that she supported an, a mask option for the parents. The more, majority of parents wants to maintain the option of masking or not. We should not be bending the need to the outspoken minority of parents who want mandate masks on all children. We cannot even determine if transmission is being done in the school. These kids play sports, participate in after school activities, go play at a friend's house, go to restaurants, go to movies. They're all on mass. Don't tell me that you can one hundred percent determine that these cases are being transmitted in school. We need to keep the option for the parents. And let's not force these masks on these kids. We have less than one half of one percent of our entire town infected. Let's not make rash decisions based on the panic from a few. Let the parents do what they do best and make the decisions for their children.
Hi, my name is Japhin Roy. I teach fourth grade, fourth grade here in Seabrook. I'm actually here to talk about the teaching aspect of what we're seeing right now. Talk about anxiety, we feel it too. None of us want to have to wear masks. We're doing it because we want to keep everybody safe. I like to go outside. Bring my kids outside all the time. Jen Hubbard, ask your daughter, we were outside most of the time last year. I can promise you, the anxiety for me doesn't come as much from anything else as it is when more than half of my class of twenty students was out last week for five days. Most of my class, again, not most, five students out of twenty were out today. It is really hard to present curriculum when you're missing a lot of students. The anxiety for us is just as real as it is for the kids. I lose sleep at night worrying about what I'm going to be able to teach, who's going to be in school, and if any of my kids are sick. I just, I know how you feel. I understand. Please understand, we're here for your kids. I've said it before to all of you, every time I speak at these school board meetings, I love your kids and I love this town. And all I want to do is teach. And right now, this is just taking away from all of it. Please do what's best for the kids to be in school. That's all I ask.
Hi, my name is Emily Watts. Um, I have two kids here in the elementary school. I'm also an educator myself. Um, I want to see the statistics that you have on most of the parents, um, want a mask optional. I wasn't told, so I don't know where you're getting that data from. But anyway, I'm here and say, I think our schools need to have a mask mandate. As an educator, I'm seeing it in the schools. I'm also seeing children not having breakdowns in the school over a mask. My kids wear their masks perfectly fine. They might grumble at home as kids do. But I can at least tell you from where I stand in the classroom, maybe not in Seabrook, but another district. Um, once they're at school, they're perfectly fine. I've never once had to yell at students, um, or calm them down because they're wearing a mask unless they have some like social, uh, disabilities there. Um, so again, Emily, I'm, I really hope that you guys put our students first, put their safety first, put the health of our community first and do the mask mandate. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Robert Wood. Um, I have two kids that go to elementary school. I just have a quick question. Out of the seventeen, uh, you said, was it teachers or administrators that were out Friday? Um, do you know how many of them are actually sick or is it just, um, prior engagements? Okay, cause I was just, I'm, my, my point is kind of go off the, um, first gentleman that, that went, um, the, the carbon monoxide is, is the studies that they've done is, is quite, quite dangerous, um, for, for masks. Um, and also, you know, with these breakthrough cases, they've showed that whether it's vaccination or, or mask wearing, um, the actual perception of it is probably greater than the effectiveness. Um, so I just want to thank you guys for your time. That's it.
Hi, um, my name's Megan Hoyt. I am, uh, my daughter is in first grade here and I am an elementary school counselor uh, in another district. Um, I just wanted to say, speaking to the kids' mental health, I similar echo to what you have said. In school, I don't really typically see a lot of kids fighting this. The way that the mitigation strategies have been explained to me, the best way is it's like layering Swiss cheese. And so you put on a mask, that's one layer, but there's still holes. Of course there are, because there are particles that go through, of course. And so then you have your three foot distancing and then you have this and you have that. And so they all on top of each other go. But right now, it seems to me like we do have a bit of a problem that's going on in terms of spread. And right now, maybe temporarily, we do need to say that their masks need to go on temporarily while we see if that does help mitigate things. I don't think it's fair to the teachers to put this additional stress on them. And I love the idea of outdoor spaces. I love that idea. But I want to know who's researching that and on what time. These teachers are so taxed. I can't even begin to know what that's like to have that classroom in front of them. I work K to four and I feel stressed. I feel like it's the last day of June and it's only the end of September. Your teachers are so stressed. If you want your kids to be in school, they need their teacher. If that teacher gets sick, vaccinated or not, they're still have to be out for ten days. And I don't know if you've spoken to us, but what's your subpool look like? I know where I teach, it's, you don't have substitutes. So my expectation would be, or, but I can't wait to see the volunteers signing up to get Corey to be substitutes. It's really hard right now to be an educator. And I think it's really important for parents to remember that. If you haven't been in that classroom to sit there to teach those kids, you don't know what this is like right now. It's not fun. None of the mandates for the, uh, from up above have been lifted. Everything, they're still required to teach your kids everything they were prior to pandemic. And on top of that, they have to keep the distance. They have to keep the mask. They have to make sure they wash their hands. They have to do this, that and that. Not to mention put together the packets for the kids that are at home. If you love your teachers, which it sounds to me like you all really, really do, you love your school, you want your kids here. Respect your teachers. This is a different level. It's so stressful right now. So thank you for all of you that are here. I really greatly appreciate what you're doing. That's it.
My name's Frank Southers. I have, uh, sixth grader and a fourth grader going here. I'm going to start by quoting a man whose policies I didn't agree with, but I admired him. The only thing we have to fear is fear itself. Now, fear can tear down society and it looks like that's what's happening right now. I don't know what you guys are doing in your districts or whatever, but this is our district. Alright, I hear you throwing these numbers out here. Hundred and twenty-seven kids are out of school right now. Well, my son's out of school right now because he had a sore throat on Friday. Had to go get him a COVID test. Brought him back on Monday. Hey, he's got to leave again. Well, what do you know? He's still got a sore throat. It, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So my son's out, you know, for about ten days and he's getting a better education with me at home. It's ridiculous. Let's get up here, cry, oh, do what's best for the kids. Do what's best for the kids. My kids are not coming to school if there's going to be a mask mandate. Maybe that doesn't mean anything to you. Alright, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Susan Marshall. And I'm going to read you something from a teacher. Susan Marshall. I'm a resident of Seabrook. Okay, this is from a middle school teacher. Because this is how it's affecting kids. What do you believe the teachers should be protective? These kids need to be protected just as well. I had a middle school student who was just coming unraveled in every way. He walked up to me and said, today just isn't so good. I sighed, looked him in the eye and said, can I give you a one minute hug? He shrugged and said, I guess. I said, you have to commit to the whole minute. Can you do that? He, he said, I guess. So the hug began. At twenty seconds, I always watch the clock. He whispered, why one minute? I whispered back, so my heart can talk to yours. My thirty seconds has squeezed tightened and my forty-five seconds, his head was on my shoulder. At sixty seconds, I said, you made it. He didn't move. Ten seconds passed. I said, it's time. He said, thanks for talking to my heart. Looked me in the eye and half smiled. Who knows what tomorrow will bring, but today that child was loved, if only for seventy seconds. Those children need to see faces. They need to have recognition. They need to see your mouth move. They need to see you smile. They need to know that people care about them. That's what they need. And, and this is what I feel and it's putting, you probably aren't going to like it and I don't care. If you're an adult living in fear of children who don't cover their faces, it sounds like you could use some psych help. It's not children's job to suffocate themselves to make you feel safe. If you're that scared, stay home and keep your fears off everyone else's children.
Casey Carter, I got my five kids, two of them, I count it, three here. Is about solutions. What about if we start on the buses before the kids even reach the school? Is taking their temperature. If they have a hundred degree temperature, then they stay home. Whether the parent wants to send them to school sick or not, before it even gets on the buses or in the school, you're stopping it. I just don't see why we have to mask our kids. If you're wearing a mask, you're protecting my kid and everyone else's kid and yourself. So I just don't get the concept of having to wear masks, but you guys are not trying to find solutions. You don't take temperatures anymore. You don't do any of that stuff. You don't do cleaning, you're not outside activities. We have a stage, DPW, Old Humble over here. We could be doing this meeting right now outside, but instead we're inside. Why ain't we outside? That, that should be set up on the grounds and actually we're not to replace the rug every year because it's sitting underneath the pine tree. We've been saying this for years is let's set this up somewhere around here. I mean, it comes in three pieces. We can set it up within an hour or two. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. We can do out, and we should be talking about field trips right now. Not masking our kids in school. We're not even trying to fundraise for eighth grade field trip to Washington DC. What if the numbers go down? Then we don't even have the, the money there or anything. I mean, I mean, just everything. I mean, nature's classroom is, you know, we don't want to go, I don't want to go back to the past. I want to go to the future. Where we're outside, we're doing activities, we're not just sit in a classroom cooped up. I mean, I remember when I was a kid, we used to go down in the marsh and all, I mean, it was, it was awesome. Now it's just sit them in a classroom, teach them what we want to teach them and that's it. Teachers aren't parents. They're teachers. If we want to make our kids wear a mask, then we can make our kids wear a mask. Don't put that burden on the teachers to make our kids wear a mask. That's just my opinion. If you're wearing a mask, it's protecting you and me and everyone else. So, thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Jessica Brown. I have a sixth grader. I know. I have a, um, a sixth grader and a second grader who attend school here. Um, they're both on bus eleven, who has been told, well, as we all know, there was a cluster on the bus. My seven-year-old, who loves school to death, now is more anxious in the morning about not forgetting her mask when she gets on the bus. She comes home saying, Mom, you need to take my temperature. I think I have a fever. She's so worried about sneezing and coughing at school that she's going to get sent home. She does not look forward to coming to school, only to see her friends. Like she has anxiety I've never seen. Over Christmas, me, her father and my son had COVID. I kept them home the first part of school so that they could be remote because I was nervous. I was nervous. I wore a mask. I did what I was supposed to do. I worked all throughout COVID with a mask on and I had headaches extremely bad. So I send my daughter back to school and send my son back to school wearing masks. My daughter was the only one who still to this day has not got COVID, but yet missed more school than my son did, who had COVID. So I'm surprised. I know they've made everybody move on. They allowed everyone to move on to the next grade. My daughter entered second grade at a kindergarten reading level. She's been struggling. And I've had the tools to help her and everything. And I, I get, the teachers are trying to keep everyone safe. I understand that. My seven-year-old going into second grade, I don't want her having anxiety about covering her face. I want her to be able to go to school and see her friends and like they said, see people's faces. They don't want to see people talking behind a mask. They're kids. It's cold season. People are going to start sneezing. They're going to start coughing. But that's the last thing I want my daughter worrying about in the morning is, oh, Mom, I've been sneezing. They're going to send me home. We don't have, we, as adults, we, we shouldn't have to worry about that. Like, I just want them to be able to come to school and get an education. I don't want them to have to worry about sneezing and coughing or having a headache when they come home or being able to breathe. My daughter gets nervous from wearing the mask because she's constantly being told, you need to pull the mask up. It's not covering your nose. She doesn't, I, I don't want her to have to go through that. I have anxiety really bad. I don't want my seven-year-old starting out life like that. I want her to be able to enjoy the type of elementary that I was. We were outside on field trips. We were learning outside like these people have said. And I absolutely respect the teachers for being here and teaching them. Remote was the hardest thing I've, I have ever had to do in my life. And I don't want to have to do that again. But like, we're, we're, we're just trying to push the point. If there's a small group of kids that are worried or parents that are worried, we need to accommodate those children. I am not sitting here not wearing a mask because I don't care about everybody's children getting sick. I care very much. Just as, I would think people would care that my kids get sick. I don't want to send my kids to school and get other people sick. But over that last Christmas, when we all got COVID and my daughter didn't, we never left the house. And my daughter, like I said, missed more school than anybody missed anything. And trying to explain to a six-year-old why she can't go outside and play, why she can't go to school, why she can't do this. I don't know how many of you guys had to deal with that, but it was one of the hardest things I ever had to do because she had no idea what COVID was. She was with me every step of the way and she never caught it. So my daughter might be lucky, as some people have posted on Facebook that my child was lucky she didn't get it. Yes, she was lucky, but we're all still here and we're all trying to keep everybody safe. So I just want my daughter to come to school and not have to worry about this. That's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Tina Janveren. My affiliation is, I have three stepchildren in this school. And I have probably, at one point, put all of your kids in this car seat. I had a whole notebook of facts here that I've been digging, with help from my cousin, the nurse. Like how, to have a mask be effective, you would have to change it four times an hour, because once it gets wet, it's worse. About how there are more people died from the Spanish flu. They died of bacterial pneumonia, instead of the flu, from the mask. So that terrifies me, especially when I take your kids out of their car seats and they're bright red and they can't breathe. It makes me sick, and I'm gonna be sick, it hurts, hurts me so bad inside, I cried all weekend. But I'm, yeah, I'm, one more thing. A boy came up to me today, Tina, Tina, did you hear, there's a school board meeting, can you please, please go and make sure they don't put a mask on us, please? This little boy. Every day, last year, I'm gonna say every day, because it wasn't every day, but a lot of the days, he'd get a migraine and throw up from the anxiety. And be in bed for days, he'd miss all that school, and then he'd go back and do it again. And he begged me to come here tonight. So, I don't know. I don't wanna make an idiot's decisions for anybody else's kids, but I don't want, I don't want my kids to not be able to breathe. I mean, isn't that how this all started, with somebody saying, I can't breathe?
On the face mask, the blue ones that you're all wearing. It says on the box, this product is an ELOPE mask, this product is not a respirator and will not provide any protection against COVID-19 coronavirus or any other viruses or contaminants. Number two, New Hampshire hospitals are no longer allowing their nurses to wear cloth masks, they are less effective than the blue masks. That's the rule. And I hang out with teachers and healthcare workers up in, up in protests and they're losing their jobs because they won't take that. And I've been told twice a day, they are to be seated with N95s. And they are worthless after that, and they are the only thing that are effective against COVID-19. So what you're doing to these kids is not saving them, you're hurting them because they're not breathing, they're stressed out, kids cry. Everything is happening to them, so if your teachers feel the need to put these masks on these kids, why don't you get a vax? Because it seems to be the thing, get a booster, get whatever you need, but these kids aren't giving anybody, and they go home feeling like I'm gonna kill my fat grandparent, my grandmother's gonna die if you don't, if I don't wear a mask. Would you like to live like that every day? Any of you, any of you wanna get up and feel like you're gonna, you're gonna die if you don't put a mask on, your kid's gonna die? Your grandparents gonna die, you're gonna be held responsible? That's ridiculous, I know, I've lost the child, do I know what it feels like? Do you, any of you know what it feels like, stressed to feel like, it feels like you're responsible for somebody's death? You're putting that on all these kids? It's ridiculous, it's stupid.
Christopher Tilly. I have a fifth and fourth grader in the school. Um, I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I have to, because I feel like over the last year and a half, I've seen my kids, um, decline mentally. They're smart kids, they're nice kids, they enjoy life, they're involved in everything, every parent teacher conference, I'm always told what great kids I have. Um, but at home, they're disconnected now. They have very few friends that they can go hang out with. It's, it's sad to me, it breaks my heart. One of the most important things I used to look forward to in the morning was watching my kids smile before they got on the bus. And now I can't see their face, because they're more worried about having their mask on their face before they get on the bus. I can't, I can't enjoy their smile, that's part of being a parent, is be able to see your kid enjoy going to school, because education is what you tell them is important, right, so they, they look forward to going to school to please you. Now you can't even see their emotions, they can't see your emotions as educators, you can't see their emotions as students, you don't know if you're reaching them or not. I, I, I work in this town, I love this town, I've coached many, many kids in this town. And one of the driving forces behind all those things is to see the joy on a kid's face, but if you can't see the kid's face, how do you know the impact you're having in their life? I understand, let's make them safe, let's, let's move forward with this thing, but in my opinion, we're moving backwards with this thing. The mental health of these children is declining and we're just more worried about our own safety from COVID-19 rather than third, fourth, fifth grade mental health. I think we're dropping the ball there, so we need to get it together and figure out what's more important. I think the mental health is more important, because that's a huge struggle, to echo Pat, these kids, they're gonna suffer way down the road, not just today. So, you have to consider that. Thank you.
No, my voice is loud enough, you can hear me, you know, all the way to the, I take this mask off, this mask does not protect me. It never was meant to protect me, it was only meant to protect you. Hopefully I'm keeping.
Looking for an answer, you aren't protecting me, I have lupus, I've been out of state by time, I've been around hundreds of thousands of people.
I'm sorry for having.
I've never worn a mask, not once on my face, and I've never had a bear.
I would like your immune system. I've had the disease. I'll go through the chair. And I would just like to make one statement, truthfully, uh, we took care of these kids all last year. We didn't have one case of COVID in the school, and we were six feet distance, kids hand washed all the times. They had, they had, uh, they were wearing masks, it was mandatory back then, not now. And we had not one case of nosocomial COVID in Seabrook Elementary School. This year, what do we have, four so far? And this year, because they're not wearing masks. Or something, oh, I don't know, I don't mean to, I don't mean to be a know-it-all. Well, no, I'm, I'll talk, I'll talk to you, I'm sorry. But that's it, we really, we had not one case last year, so I implore you all to think. And you know, I never have a problem having kids wear a mask, I have a big bucket, by the way, I'm Nurse Mary, the nurse of the school. And we have, I have a big bucket of, of Paw Patrol masks and, you know, Elsa and the rest of them, and they come in, they take them and they put them on, and wait a minute, they go out the door. I've, it's not, see, anybody have any trepidation in my office about masks? They may have it at home, but not, not at school. I'm sorry didn't follow the procedure, and I apologize, but I want you to know that we didn't have one case. I don't know what those masks are, it was God, I don't know, but we didn't have one case, now we have four. Alright, thank you.
Hi, my name's Michelle Perkins, and I have two children, one is in the fifth grade and the other one is in the second grade. And I'm an occupational therapist, um, and one of the biggest things that we've been studying is all the mental health that, the impact that it's having on the children with COVID. So I guess my question to you guys is, what are you doing to improve support for the children, for the mental health in their school, regardless, masks or no masks, with all this stuff that's going on? I get it, and I commend the staff and the faculty for all the stuff that they've been able to, to deal with or try to deal with for the last few months. Um, but my biggest concern is, not necessarily the sound selfish, but not your mental health, but my child's mental health, where I cannot get to go to school in the morning, it is a fight every single day. Both of them, both my fifth grader and my first, uh, second grader, sorry. And they are fearful of all these things, so what are we doing to provide them with mental health support? What other opportunities can we provide them other than outside counseling? Just within the school, to talk about it collectively, so that they're not fearful of what their classmates are going to say, or the teachers are gonna think. Because I will tell you, my second grader has no resistance to wearing a mask, I told her it's completely optional, I choose not to wear one, I wear one if I'm asked to when I go in the store, but other than that, I do not wear a mask, because I don't like the way it feels on my face, I don't like that it hards bacteria, all these other things, things that my second grader is not aware of, I've never told her these things, I just say to her, you're welcome to wear a mask, or you're not. She has a lot of anxiety about coming to school these days, so I just, again, I ask you, what can we do to help their mental health? Because honestly, at this point, her education academically is not my concern, it's her mental health going forward. Adults should technically have the coping mechanisms for anxiety, not this type of stressors, but general anxiety of how to deal with things day to day, in and out, our children, our job is to teach them how to do this, and so not just as educators, administrators, or parents, what are we doing to provide them with these supports? Thank you.
I just wanted to respond to the, uh, the educators that said, well, I've never heard the kids complain. Um, I watched Anthony suffer in silence at school, because we tell him, wear the mask, you gotta wear the mask, don't give the teachers problems. So they go to school and they keep their mouth shut and they do what they're told to do, because, you know, they're, they obey their parents. But when they come home and you sit there and watch what they're going through, and you will sit there and listen to the, to watch your son deteriorate, like I watched my son gain 16 pounds in less than two months, 16 pounds, he didn't wanna do anything, because he was just, like, just spiraling down, but he'd go to school to see his friends, and put a happy face on for a little bit, not and a lot of these kids suffer in silence, so when I hear somebody say, well, I never heard the kid in the school, say, kid's not gonna say it at school. They suffer in silence, so what she just said about mental health and, and being supportive of these kids, yeah, I think that's a major issue, and, uh, also, school is out for most of the year, last year, these kids were remote, and you were spraying things, so, you know. Remote, no, I'm talking about the remote, the, the only, we had no cases last year, pretty sure we had remote, right? It's a lot of remote last year, and then when they, and then elementary was all, yeah, magical, so middle school, I got stuck with the kid angry all the time. My wife got stuck with the kid angry all the time, we got to watch this deterioration. But anyway, yeah, they suffer in silence, so mental health probably is an issue, and I'm glad that she came before me, because she kinda laid the groundwork for it, they're not gonna say it at school.
Hi, I'm, I'm Blake Delaney, I'm the occupational therapist in both schools. I think a lot of the things that I was gonna say that have already been touched on, but some of the things that, um, sort of the unintentional consequences of the optional masking that, um, have come out of this, is that because we're optional, we can't put any kind of targeted masking in place if there's people who have been in contact with other students, so then there's no, there's no recourse whether a student comes to school positive or not, if they're asymptomatic. The other thing that we haven't talked about yet is that we've had a hard time recruiting new staff members, we have lots of positions opened, and they're hard to fill, and at least one of the recruits has mentioned the masking policy as a reason to not take the job. That's a huge problem, we have lots of kids, we need the staff, and we can't recruit new people if we, if they're afraid to come here. They're not gonna pick us.
I would love to address that.
My name is Andrew Wallace, I'm the president of Seacoast Education Association, uh, I appreciate the chance to address the board in Seabrook tonight. At the last board meeting, uh, I was happy to report that staff are glad to be back in school and in person with their students, building academic success, providing some emotional, social emotional support, and creating lasting memories. This is still true, but unfortunately, over the past weeks, the dramatic rise in COVID-19 case counts and symptoms in Seabrook schools has created not only fear in staff and families, but a roadblock to in-person learning in our schools, and most importantly, a danger to the health and safety of our students, our staff, and this community. The CDC recently published a study that confirms that schools that do not require masks were 3.5 times more likely to have a virus outbreak than schools that required universal masking. We can see those numbers here in SAU 21 as well. Together, we can ensure everyone's health and safety and continue to provide in-person education by adhering to the safety protocols recommended by the CDC, the AAP, DHHS, and our own SAU 21. Wearing a mask is a small but essential practice that will prevent the spread of COVID-19 in Seabrook schools. Anti-mask advocates, especially ones on cable TV, often cite a study published in June about carbon dioxide, called Experimental Assessment of Carbon Dioxide Content in Inhaled Air With or Without Face Mask in Healthy Children. For the record, this flawed study was retracted by the Journal of American Medical Association in July, and widely discredited by the medical community. While this retraction and discrediting has been reported nationally, the study and the idea of carbon dioxide poisoning continues to come up as an argument to not wear masks. Let's be clear here, there are dozens of jobs that require the use of masks for long periods of time, including engineers, surgeons, doctors, nurses, and care providers, painters, construction workers, including carpenters and masons, laboratory workers, dentists and dental assistants, EMTs, and even police officers. As we have often said, we all have a role to play in keeping our SAU, SAU 21 community safe and our students in school. We mean it when we say we are all in this together. We teachers and staff all look forward to the continued success of Seabrook students this year. We all care about their social emotional well-being, it's why we do what we do. Thank you all for your time and for your efforts on behalf of this community.
Hi, um, my name's Yvonne, my association with this school is my grandmother, my mother, her mother, me, my kids, my grandchildren are now in this school. Colin, C-O-L-I-N. Um, I'm gonna try to go over my notes without messing up, so for him to say that, yes, all these places are making you wearing masks, well, those are jobs they choose to do, just like me, I choose to work in a very busy convenience store and I have to wear a mask. So kids don't get a choice, they are required to go to school. So also, how many, so I remember school being closed last year, so that's probably why there were no COVID cases. The school was closed for the most part. Yeah, right. Okay, so, um, does anybody know how many kids were remote learning last year? Does anyone have a number, how many kids were at home? Okay, thank you. So, with knowing these kids were coming back to school and not having a mask mandate or an optional, why isn't the cleaning done more? They said it's exactly the same as it was. They said it's exactly the same as it was last year. Why hasn't more been done to clean? Regardless of being short-staffed, trust me, I know what short-staffed is. So, so that's, and I'm just giving you an idea of what happened. I can only speak for one of my grandchildren. She was remote last year. It was horrible, absolutely horrible. First half an hour, 45 minutes was introducing each other. So that's, that's almost an hour out of the six hours that they were online. When she needed help, when, when I tried to help her, of course, I couldn't. So she fell behind. She's very smart. She's always had great grades in school. She suffered last year emotionally because she wasn't seeing her friends, not being able to do the work and me trying to help her. She was frustrated. It's hard to get in contact with a teacher after the 12 o'clock or right after lunch and they were done, they were gone. No way to get in contact with them with any helps other than email, but that doesn't help because she needs one-on-one help at that point. So that was extremely frustrating. So that left a lot on grandparents, parents who are working, trying to work to keep the house going. As you know, most of you know, I work a lot of hours. I tried to keep up. I tried to email. I tried to keep doing all this and just couldn't. It was extremely hard. So that was extremely frustrating. And to her point, every mask that I have bought for myself, for my granddaughters, all of six of them, it does say on the package, unless it's an N5, it does not protect against COVID, the flu. I mean, it says right on the package, it's not meant for medical use. It's not going to protect these kids. So unless we can supply these kids with N95 masks and that they fit properly and that they're enclosed, to me, it's just pointless. It's, what's the sense? It's a waste of money. It's not working, obviously, because I also work in a very busy place. I see hundreds of people a day. People are still getting COVID with masks, vaccinations. I've had people who work for me who have vaccinations that are still getting it, regardless of masks, not wearing a mask, whatever the case may be. So it's just extremely frustrating for grandparents, parents who have to work and can't take the time off to come and sit on that, you know, I, what do they call those things? Those eye patty things, whatever they're sending home with these kids. It, yeah, thank you. It's just too much. It's too much. And I felt like I should have been paid for teaching last year when they were remote because it's a lot of hard work and trying to work. And these masks do not work. I see it every day. So thank you.
All right, I got one thing to say about it. I'm a painter. I'm a painter when we calm down. So I don't know anybody that paints with anything other than stuff you get at Home Depot that you're going to use an N95 mask. My name's Justin Tessier, Cross Beach Road. Tessier, T-E-S-S-I-R. Yeah, I use a hose that goes outside with an, with an compressor hooked up to it for fresh air. Otherwise, I die. As far as everybody that wants to wear masks, I think that's perfectly fine. I respect that. But I don't think any of the parents here need to make their kids do it if they don't feel their kids should have it. I, my wife had some information she wanted me to forward to you guys. And that, that just substantiates what we were talking about earlier about how long those masks are good for. They did a test in Florida and they come back with all sorts of wonderful, wonderful treats in the masks. I'm curious though about one thing that wasn't mentioned tonight. There was a mention from a friend of mine that some of the funding that's going to go to the school is going to get taken away if we do not have a mask mandate. If that's the case, that should be addressed separately. It shouldn't be put on the kids to slip it through. That should be forthright. And then, like I said, I use them, I paint, I use a respirator. If I have to be in the confines, I have a charcoal activated respirator with a lithium ion battery pack that feeds my air. Because I am, I have bad lungs. I'm at 92% on a really good day. Anyways, that's all I got.
Really quick, I think Kelly needs to be let back into the meeting in case you guys can hear me. Anybody? I think Kelly needs to be let back in the meeting if anyone can hear what I'm saying.
Can you guys hear us? No?
Hi. Yes, Jen, I guess we can hear you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Small. I'm a third grade teacher. I've been teaching at Seabrook Elementary for 22 years. I was actually on my way home and was listening and heard a bunch of misconceptions that I wanted to come clarify. I'm a elementary school teacher, which means all last year I was face-to-face five days a week with my kids. They were wearing masks six feet apart. I had 12 kids in my room. This year, we are three feet apart if we can because we have 18 bodies, third grade bodies, in the smallest classrooms in the school. I am keeping my kids socially distanced. We talk about the fact of being six feet apart during snack time. They're not allowed to sit right next to each other, but they're still able to talk. We talk about how we should be sitting so that we don't transmit germs. A lot of people say that you can't catch it from kids. I'll let you know right now. And if you had me as a teacher, you know, we can catch it from kids because my son got it and brought it home to my whole family. Everyone, thank goodness, was fine. I taught with COVID for two weeks while I was quarantined to make sure that your kids, my kids, got the education that they deserved because I didn't feel like having a substitute trying to do a remote program would be effective for kids. The one thing that made me drive back was a lot of the audience members saying like, talking about the teachers want this, the teachers want this. We didn't call this meeting. This was called by the school board. The decisions that are coming down affect us just like everybody else. I wore this mask when I came up because I'm in my school and I was told by my administration and my superintendent that we need to wear masks. If you guys make the decision that students need to wear masks, then that's your choice, but it has nothing to do with us. It has to do with your decision. The other thing I want to mention is the fact that just like Mrs. Rohr mentioned, there are a lot of kids missing a lot of school already. I have one guy I haven't seen since the second week of school. I don't know how I'm going to catch him up. When we're dealing with third graders who are at kindergarten level, first grade level, second grade level, and third grade level, all in one classroom. So I think there's, yes, I don't want the masks. I don't want my own kids masked, but they go to school with masks and they go with multiple masks every day so that they can change them out. Because that's what my belief is. But my school district has two cases. We're looking at 12, and that's concerning because I'm afraid of the amount of kids that are going to be missing school and how the anxiety must be for them as well to be missing that much school and getting further and further behind. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm Max Abramson, state representative. I just had two quick comments. One was being back here, I'm hearing a lot of like a triple echo or double echo and so it's making it hard to hear. And also with the, even a little bit of, you know, mumbling and talking in the room, it makes it hard to hear what, what people are saying. The other comment that I had is that we've been getting a lot of conflicting information from the media, you know, the two weeks to flatten the curve and so on and so forth. And one of the most difficult jobs we've had is, I've had as a legislator is trying to keep up with it all, keeping up with the changing story and trying to get the record straight. We get different briefings from policy experts than you folks do. And sometimes we're getting information from medical experts and from Washington DC than you guys are getting. And so when we get conflicting information like that, I just try to post updates on social media. So sometimes they're telling you that you have to do something that some people can't do, or they're not talking about it, certain medical exceptions that we're debating in the legislature right now. So, but if folks do have questions, we sometimes get conflicting information also as legislators.
Patrick, now the two kids in the school. Listen, like, I think my big thing here is we're, the parents still know what's best for their kids. Like, we've all been protected in some way, shape, or form. We know what to do as parents. Like, it is my option to make my kid mask or not. I know everyone thinks that I should tell you what to do and you should tell me what to do, but at the end of the day, we're the ones responsible for making the decisions for all of our kids. I have been in the back of an ambulance for the entire pandemic. I have helped people with COVID. I've helped people with every other kind of sickness. The masks need to be optional. Like, you cannot just tell me that you know better than me and I know better than you. It's my job as a parent to stand up for my kid. And right now, both of my kids are angry, depressed, scared because people are telling them one thing versus another. I can sit them down and tell them, listen, if you would like to wear your mask, you can. I can force them to wear a mask. One suggestion I would have to the board and to the school is we send permission slips home for everything, from everything, from how you're going to discipline the kids to bathroom policies, to everything. Send home a permission slip that says mask or no mask for the kid in the classroom. I know it's not the teacher's job to do that, but unfortunately, you're the one in that situation. You could have had the vaccine, you could have been protected, you're wearing a mask. We're making the decision as parents to send them masks or not. If you have a list, you will, because I've heard the people complain and people argue about, well, my kid goes to school and doesn't wear the mask even though I want them to. Well, that's on you as a parent to discipline your kid to tell them to wear the mask. The teacher will have a list of the kids that are expected to wear masks. The rest of us can go on about our business. I've spent my entire life, Marine Corps, and as public service in the fire department for the last 12, 14 years to give people the freedom of choice for something. If you want your kid to wear a mask, tell them to wear a mask. But everyone up here does not know what's best for my kid. If I want him to not wear a mask, he doesn't have to. I told him today before I came that I would stand up here and I would fight for my kids, and that's what I'm here to do. I'm saying leave this as an option. It's the only way. This is the only way. The parents are the ones that should make this choice.
I just want to add to that. We're in the constitutional republic, the United States of America. We have the inalienable right to life, liberty, pursuit of happiness. It's our job to keep our kids safe, not yours. It's your job to educate them. It doesn't matter really what you guys decide to do up here. Because you know what? 90% of these parents send their kids to school without a mask? What are you going to do? You don't have the power, we do. That's all I have to say.
All right. Sheree Spark. I have a pre-K and a second grader, both of which wear masks every day. I have an immunocompromised husband with type 1 diabetes. Okay? These masks protect you. Okay? They don't protect me, but if she's wearing it, I'm wearing it, we're both protected. Where are my facts? Last year, last year, okay? Last year, that's fine. Last year, these children were in... Last year, we were in school full-time, elementary school. My daughter loved school. She loved coming here every day. She had a mask on her face. She did perfectly fine. I mean, I am, I don't care about, like, if you don't want your kid to wear a mask, that's fine, but something needs to be done. These cases are going up, they're going to continue to go up. What can we do to make that not happen? Try wearing masks. Maybe if it doesn't work, try something else. Do something. We need to do something. SAS, SAS will shut down. We've talked about it. How many cases do we need? What is the number we need to get to people before we say enough is enough? It's not fair. It's not fair. It's the fact that there's cases. There's 12 cases in this elementary school and middle school. That is the problem. Okay? That's it. Well, I'm just looking at the crowd. Yeah, when you speak to me, I'm going to look at you. But I just, I just feel like we all are here for this, for the children. It's for the kids. Stop thinking about yourselves, think about the kids, think about other people. This virus isn't about us, it's about everyone. That's all I have to say.
Hi, my name's Heather Beebo. I'm a resident and an employee here. I don't have a speech. I wasn't planning on speaking. If you know me, I'm not confrontational, so this is really hard for me. I have very strong opinions and I keep them to myself because they're mine. But I feel like, sitting here tonight, the one thing that I've heard is we all want kids in school. They all need to be here, they need to get their education, they need their mental health. There are so many reasons why school is good for them. We all know the mask debate, it is what it is. I'm not here to comment on that. What I'm saying is it feels very attacky. It feels us against them, you know? You all know what I mean. Nobody is going to come out of this meeting tonight fully happy. We're all going to, someone's going to be happy, someone's going to not be happy. I think we have the kids' best interest at heart. Well, I know I do when I say this. This is a huge learning opportunity for our kids to learn the art of compromise. I think we need to come up with a solution that's not, we're going to wear the mask all year, we're not going to wear it at all, it's not going to be optional, but maybe we can come up with a short-term solution where the mask is worn for a limited time during certain periods when there's an outbreak like we have two clusters. And maybe we teach our kids that we're going to be wearing these masks for just a short period of time so that we can get through this, so we can get back to school. Because we do have a lot of kids that are out of school and it's hard and they're not getting the education that they need and they're not getting the support from their teachers. And I know they can't see a smile behind the mask, but you know when a kid's smiling and you know when a teacher's smiling and you know when they care about you. And I just hope that we collectively, as a community, you guys, us, everybody, teach our kids the art of compromise and supporting each other. That's what I hope for tonight anyways.
Hi, my name's Gail Wright. I have a seventh grader and a third grader in the school system. Just going to, I wrote down something this time so I don't get emotional like I did the last time when I spoke. I am here today to ask that you please leave face masks optional. Masks should be optional for teachers as well. I was in attendance and spoke at the last school board meeting with the same request. Thank you for listening. I understand that we have increased cases in Seabrook. However, children are getting milder symptoms. The positive children will now have antibodies built up without needing a vaccination that clearly is not helping the spread and hasn't been through the normal 10 years of testing. Our bodies are made to fight off viruses on their own. Depriving children of fresh air and making them nervous is only going to hurt their immune system, not to mention the emotional and social issues that will follow. My turning point was about a year ago, I was pretty scared and depressed about the virus. I became very angry and opened my eyes when my son Liam let a door close on an elderly gentleman that was leaving the store behind us. I said, Liam, why did you do that? You hold the door for everyone all the time. He said, Mom, I have to stay six feet apart from people. He didn't learn that from me. He did not learn that from me. I hold the door for everybody. I said, that's not okay. We both apologized to the gentleman and I explained to Liam that I don't care what anyone says, you never let a door close on someone behind you. The harm this virus is causing goes way deeper than the illness. We all need to wake up. This virus is just another thing being highly televised to divide our once United Nation. We live in America and masks should be optional. New Hampshire is not in a state of emergency and masks are recommended not mandated. I am pretty sure there are many lawsuits being brought forth in regards to whether the school even has the authority to mandate masks when the state... when the state and country are not under such orders. Maybe it's time New Hampshire moves forward with the voucher system that Governor Sununu has presented in the past so that we have school choice. Please leave masks optional for students and staff. I know there is pressure from some parents and the teachers' union to mandate masks. If they feel comfortable and safe wearing a mask, then wear it. Don't force it on my children or me. Thank you for listening.
I just thank you for speaking tonight, no matter where you lie. It's important to fight for your children or your beliefs, one way or the other. And I appreciate everybody's input, whether it be phone calls, emails, here tonight, or whatnot. I appreciate it.
I got one question. If we go back to the masks, what is the metric for sending the kids home for 10 days? How does that affect the attendance that we're already facing? Are we still gonna have the kids being quarantined 14 days, 10 days, 20 days, or does that make them exempt? Make them still go into the school?
Definitely something that we'll discuss. Okay.
I just wanted, this was brought up about the actual masks.
Yeah.
And the biggest point against it was that kids are missing school. So if it makes an exception, that's something that's it.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Kelly. You gotta unmute.
So, real quick, because obviously there's a lot that.
Guys, it's really hard for us to hear the other board members, so if we could please be quiet so that we can hear them and get through this meeting. Go ahead, Kelly.
So, it's, it's really hard to determine this. I mean, we can see, we can hear everything being Zoom and we can see things. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, did we say that on Friday there were 70 kids out? Was that the situation?
I'm sorry, I quoted numbers for today. There were 79 students out at the elementary school today and 48 at the middle school today.
Okay, so how about, because I know Friday, we got statistics from you, so how many were Friday? Because you did send that to us.
I did. I don't have my computer out.
Okay, so I guess I just want to ask how many of those were positive COVID cases that we got phone calls for today? Because I'm assuming they got tested over the weekend if they're out sick on Friday. That would kind of help us decide, okay, are these cases increasing? I mean, yeah, I understand that at this point we're at four and eight.
Please, I can't even hear her because people are talking and the audience is very difficult. So, so Kelly, I'm aware of one additional case over the weekend, but many people have indicated that they are going to wait the 10 days rather than be tested.
Okay, that is, that is a problem. Because people are choosing to stay out of school versus being tested. So if I didn't ask that question, I'm going to assume that we could possibly have 20 to 30 cases coming back in the next couple of days. But now you're telling me that they've chosen to be out for 10 days versus getting tested, so.
Some have and some have not. I mean, that, that's, that's the choice provided under the DHHS guideline.
No, and that's fine. I'm just saying, I think this information needs to be provided to us instead of just saying, you know, 70 kids were out today. It would be helpful to say 70 kids were out today. We have parents that have kids that had decided to stay out 10 days without being tested. And because that means it could be strep. It could be just a normal cold because it is caught full. I think we need to be more specific about statistics than maybe just point out what could lead to masks. And then the other question I have is, and I'm not being disrespectful, please, I'm hoping nobody takes this the wrong way. But being Zoom, it's hard to see how many of the audience members are parents versus staff and union. And the reason I say that is because I'm pretty sure that union made it clear that they don't represent students. They represent staff. And I'm pretty sure that we've already visited with the union to represent the staff. So I think that this meeting, obviously they have a right to go. It's a public meeting. But I think that being on Zoom, it's hard to tell out of all those parents or those people that spoke, how many actually were parents versus staff? I think that makes a huge difference.
I can turn you around.
No, no, no. No, I'm asking you, like, was the more, no, no, I could see, like, you can see the staff, like.
Right now, the majority of speakers were parents. I can't tell you. Were parents.
Okay, that's my question.
And I don't know if you get to, could you not see them at the podium?
I could. I ended up straight out, but it was almost halfway through.
Oh, okay.
But I guess, I mean, I thought that we were gonna try to figure out, you know, what the parents wanted.
Yeah, it was majority parents.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I think one of the issues that we need to address then is the fact that parents are keeping their kids out of school for 10 days without testing. Because to me, that like, but kind of like Kelly said, I mean, it could be that they are positive and then subsequently whatever's happening, or they're not positive. And I'm wondering if we have any feedback as to why parents would choose not to test? Because if they test, they automatically, the quarantine is the same. You know, even if they're positive, the 10 days is, is what it is. So to me, I feel like it would be more important to know if someone is positive because, I mean, for a lot of reasons. And then you can then make decisions in your household depending on, you know, how you feel or whatever you want to choose to do or not choose to do. But I'm curious as to what would prompt that? Because, I mean, my kids have to stay out 10 days, possibly 20 days, depending on how their test comes back. And to me, I would not want my kids to lose any more school than they already are. So I'm just curious as to the, if there's any feedback as to why parents would choose to test or not test.
And we, are we asking them that?
Personal choice. No, no. She's asking the administration.
All right, my son tested negative on Friday.
Why are we doing that? Why are we sending him back when he has a negative test?
She can't hear you at all, even talking because they're over here now.
If your kids, if, if there's symptoms that are, any symptom, doesn't matter.
Voice, that's what it boils down to. It's personal choice of what they want to do. They're gonna be out 10 days regardless. So I guess they're just choosing not to test. Not everybody wants to.
Guys, we can't hear what they're saying anyway.
All right, guys, if we can't get through this meeting, I can't hear the board members trying to talk, so we can't even make a vote or a decision. I'm gonna either have to clear the remote so that we can finish the meeting and pull you guys in after for the vote or we can sit here and just try to get through this. And what, just, you gotta be quiet because we can't hear. We just can't hear.
I think it's important also to address that there has been feedback from staff and other parents that have said that students are coming to school sick. Not even, I mean, it doesn't even have to be COVID. I think any sickness, fevers, you know, strep throat. Like Kelly said, a lot of it could be the normal colds. But if we keep sending our kids to school sick, we are going to continue to have this problem no matter what. We'll still have 79 kids out of elementary, whether it's COVID or not. And I think if we don't take steps now to make sure that we're not only in the school, but also at home. If we want parent choice, then parent, we need parents' help too. I think that's important to say that we need parents to help by doing the things at home, non-COVID related. I'm not even talking just about COVID, just any kind of sickness. I think we, I don't want to send, I wouldn't send my kid to school with a stomach bug or a fever or something like that. And those, whether those things are COVID or not, I wouldn't want to give it to anybody else because I know how much that sucks at my house, you know, if somebody's sick. So I think we also need to address, if we want parent choice, then we need parents to be also helping with those things. So if your kid is coming to school and they're saying, well, my mom gave me, you know, medicine this morning and then we're coming to school and then they're getting sent home anyway. You know, like, these, these things are important to also discuss that we're taking steps to make sure. And I do appreciate Casey's comment about temperature checks because I do think that that's, that's an easy thing that we could just scan really quick, you know, and if you're, if you have a fever, you gotta go home, regardless of COVID or not.
All right, Forrest, did you have anything?
Yeah, basically, I kind of want to just end my version here until we get to a vote. But I want to be clear, at least I'll speak for myself, because this really is a very difficult decision for the board. There is really never a time that we're always really on the same page. This is a very challenging decision for all of us because we do, we honor parent choice, we honor our community. We're up here to do the job that we were voted in to do. But there is no direct line for us to all say this is the right decision. It's gonna make all of you guys happy. It's gonna be the right thing. There is no solid, awesome answer. But I do want to at least, before we do the vote, be very clear over my reasons for that vote. Number one, I am not a mask advocate. I am all about parent choice and I made that very clear the last time that, that we had our meeting. I honor parents. I value parents. You are the best judges for your, your children 100%. I honor that. I love that. I have five nieces and nephews that I do not want wearing masks 100%. I, I see all of the statistics you guys are throwing. I see all the data right there. I do my own legwork. I, I hear you. I hear you. But what I'm relying, what I'm basing this on is the promise that we made to the community as a whole the last time we got together. And what we decided was to use a local lens to pull data from. Now, looking at that local lens today in Seabrook, and I go by that WMUR local lens by town, that's what we look at. It's what we decided we wanted to go with. We didn't want to take the Rockingham County data. When we made the initial vote, our numbers for COVID cases in Seabrook were between 1 and 4. There was no reason to have masks. That was why it was a unanimous vote and we said that we would revisit it if the cases increase. Well, when I look at those data as of today, it is 29 active cases in Seabrook and we are here to revisit it. Now, I want to be very clear, when I, when I do cast my personal vote, I intend to revisit this on a monthly basis to double check and to look and see where our numbers are. All right, it is not to supersede any sort of person's right to make a decision for their kids, but we are in an environment where it's not just your decision about your kid that's making the impact. And I go back to what we, what we promised was that we would revisit this as a community. So I want to be really clear that my decision is going to be based, and we talked about children's mental health. We talked about the importance of in-person learning. We have, we keep increasing these numbers. We're not gonna have the option to have any of that. We will not be in school if our cases continue to increase and we have more clusters. SAS after school will not be an option. And that's unacceptable because out of everything, that's the thing that every, every single one of us agree on, is that these kids need that. They're coming out of a hellish last year and a half. They're entering into some of it now. We need to make sure that we're keeping these programs and in-person learning as the most important thing for them. Now, I will also say that I would still not be totally supportive of, of masks with kids if we had other options. But we don't have other options. Our cleaning is not up to par where it was last year. It's not. Our custodian staff, our administrators are working literally over weekends to pull this stuff together. But there's no one who's biting at these positions. So that's one of the issues. I'm a huge advocate for outdoor spaces. We can't get our kids outside and learn at the same time. Sure, we can take mask breaks, absolutely, as I'm sure we will. But we can't get outside and, and learn and actually do these things that we could be doing in the classroom outdoors. So that's minimal options. And I take a look at student cohorting. It was identified very clearly that our numbers last year in the classroom were so much smaller than where we are right now. And the distance that we're asking them to be apart by their desks is, was half, it's like, or doubled, I guess, is what I should probably say. It went from three feet to six feet. Or I said it wrong and I meant to say it the right way. It went from six feet to three feet. So I want to be really clear. If you can, let me just finish. Thanks, Abby. That's the basis of my decision. It's all of these things together. If there were one of these things that could change, if we revisit in a month and our cleaning is increased and our numbers are down, I am, I say it again, am not an advocate for taking parent choice away. I am not. But I have got to put our safety of these students and keeping this school open as the priority. And that's beyond us. That's beyond us. We have to follow DHHS guidelines. There's so many things that look like we have control over it and we don't. But we need to make sure this school stays open. That's, that is the basis of my decision. I want to be clear on that. That is all I have to say. I, I can do that, absolutely. I would.
Guys, we're trying to, we're trying to.
I would like to make a motion.
I believe you.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna move forward. That's incredibly sweet, though, but we're gonna move forward. I'd like to meet.
Oh, go ahead, Kelly. No, we're done with the audience now. Go ahead.
Why could we lower the footage if we don't have masks now?
Because we have more children in school now, so we, in order to get everybody in school, we had to lower the, the amount of feet. And New Hampshire's guidelines are three feet distance. All right, go ahead, Kelly. Good question.
So, I don't know if it's just me, but I could have swore we did have a positive, we did have positive cases in elementary last year. Am I missing something?
We did.
Okay, I just want to make sure because it's kind of concerning that nobody remembers that. The other thing is, is that why did we get rid of the patrol thing on the apps every day for parents to fill out if there's a huge concern with kids being sent to school sick? Like, this is the thing I don't understand, is that this is the first the board's heard about this? And why did we get rid of an app that clearly made them remember every single day, oh yeah, I'm supposed to make sure that my child had, doesn't have this problem, this problem, this problem, this problem? Why would we, why would we get rid of these measures if masks optional are an issue and another teacher just blew me away? What do you mean, the kids are eating lunch in the lunchroom in their classroom still?
All right, if we could, if we could move forward, I would like to make a.
No, no answer?
Was it a question, Kelly, or?
Yeah, yeah. Sitting in their classrooms, eating lunch, I thought they, I thought we were gonna.
I can't hear you, sorry.
But I'm just a little shocked. I heard that we're, the kids are eating lunch in the classrooms and we weren't aware of that.
Yeah, I don't think that's accurate. I think that was talked about even at the August meeting, but.
No, it's accurate.
School was planning to have.
The whole elementary school is. She said that.
Well, we, now, we discussed that it possibly would be kindergarten and first, possibly, but not the whole elementary. But I think, well, maybe we should save that for our next meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
Go ahead.
So I would like to make a motion to adopt a mask, a masked policy, a mandatory mask policy, temporary mandatory mask policy. Sorry, I wanted to make sure I added those words in there. So we will revisit every monthly meeting and get updates on the masks and also the other cleaning outdoor spaces and student cohorting. I probably could have phrased that a lot better. I think we should, I'm gonna make the motion to adopt this so that we have to revote every, every meeting that we have to say whether or not we're going to maintain the masks or if our numbers are down, we revisit it.
I'll second that, Forrest.
Christina.
Such better wordage than I did. That was it, yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the board? Okay, I guess we'll be taking a vote. All those in favor?
I.
So I see Forrest, Christina, Jen.
So I see Forrest, Christina, Jen?
No.
Can you hear?
So Jen is no, um, Kelly?
No.
And Jessica?
No.
Can I, can I um propose something else?
Absolutely, you can make another motion if you feel
Okay, so I would like to at least make a motion to adopt a mask policy when there is direct contact with COVID cases. If we're not gonna put a mask policy in place that's mandated, we need to figure out something for when there are positive cases in a classroom, on a bus, whatever, the bus, they're already wearing masks, but in a classroom, if there's a child that comes into school and has been in school and then they test positive, there should be something in place where there are masks for that class. As much as people may hate it, we have to do something. If we do not adopt a mask policy for the whole school and we don't wanna mandate it, that's, that's everybody's choice to make that decision.
Direct contact?
Yeah, if you're a direct contact, if you're in a classroom, if it's a second grade classroom, like those emails we got when everybody started getting very concerned, because we were getting emails consistently every day saying there's another case here, there's another case here, there's another case in this bus, there's another case here. We need to figure out something, because at this point, we've had no policy in place, because we went optional. And now that we've had cases, again, we're here to revisit, so I'd like to make some sort of a mandate if there is a direct contact in a classroom setting that there be masks worn by that classroom for whatever the standard amount of time is, ten days or whatever. Because self-monitoring for children is obviously, what?
Guys, I, we can't hear.
Self-monitoring for kids is not, I, I don't feel like that's an effective tool. And whether we wanna say, you know, that kids don't really spread it, kids don't get it, I mean, obviously, it's spreading somehow, and that's, that is what it is. But there needs to be some, to mandate that if there is a direct contact of COVID in a classroom, that that classroom should wear masks for X amount of time, whatever time that the board deems appropriate.
You're gonna have to come up with that time.
Okay, so I would say ten days from contact with the person, whoever
The DHHS guidance is fourteen days, Christina, that they recommend.
Okay, so
Wearing a face mask after exposure is recommended for the fourteen days following exposure.
The only thing I question with that is that
Can you just repeat your, your uh motion, please?
My motion would be to adopt a mask policy for direct contact with COVID in the classroom. That if someone tests positive in a classroom setting and has been in contact with all of the kids in the classroom, that that class should wear a mask for, I would say ten days personally, because of the fact that we're quarantining for ten days and you would show symptoms, so, I mean, as far as I was told, you'd show symptoms for the first ten days, or sometime in the first
Can I just intervene for a second, because we have to remember the middle school, they change classes. So that wouldn't necessarily work, I mean, I, I agree, like, I think you're on the right track, that we need to be safe according to when there is a positive case in the classroom. But in the middle school, they switch classes, so I think that's gonna be difficult, but I do wanna throw in here, what I'm about to say is, I also think when the, like, the emails go out to the parents, that maybe the email can include SAS, the bus, and the class versus three different emails going out to the parents. Because I think this is what's causing a big, huge panic. Because it is overload, it is over, it is over the top with the emails, I mean, it is, I, I get nervous when I see them all coming in, till I realize it's actually the same case, but just three emails being sent out three different times. So the middle school, we can't, we wouldn't be able to do that, because they switch classes.
Okay, so I'll make that, I'll, I'll make the motion to make it in the elementary school, because I think that is something that needs to be done in a closed classroom setting, we have eighteen kids, if one tests positive, then that would be my motion.
If I heard you correctly, Christina
Yeah.
Her amendment was to make that the case at the elementary school only, that in the case of a direct exposure, there be a mask mandate for ten days for children in that classroom.
Yes, that would be my motion. I don't, for me, I don't have a specific motion for the middle school, because I don't know of a good solution if we're not going to make them mandatory for everyone. I don't know of a good solution of a direct exposure in that sense.
Yeah, Erin, you're right, the cohort is the grade level, so you could take that same uh motion that you're talking about, Christina. And for the middle school, the appropriate way to, to mirror that would be the whole grade level, because they do interchange within their
And they're, they're gonna be in a mask all the time then.
I think we're actually trying to find a compromise, is really what we're looking for.
Alright, hold on.
It's important to focus on what
Alright, hold on. So you're just doing elementary school, or would it?
Um, personally, that would be, that would be my, that would be my uh, my motion, to make that for the elementary school specifically.
Well, I mean, I can't vote, because I'm still confused, are we talking ten business days, or are we talking ten school days?
Ten days, ten days, I would say.
Ten days from exposure.
Ten days from exposure, weekends included, so if they're, if they're exposed on a Monday in class, then it would be, they would be
Ten days from the person who, who had COVID, like, in the classroom, test positive.
Yeah.
Whole classroom goes with a mask for ten days, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so if it was a Friday and the last time that that person was in the class on Friday, then we would want them to wear masks for, for that following week, you know, of school, so it'd be Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Ten days from the person testing positive, so
Until the Monday, the following Monday.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I take a suggestion, that I do know that in, like municipality, if there's a, if there's a if there is a positive case, they use the sanitizer, the fogger machine sanitizer. I mean, I think that you'll find that if there is a positive case and that child is sent home, if that room gets sanitized, it's not getting done, it's not getting sanitized right now. There's no sanitization with those fogger things that have been proven to make a difference.
Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Jessica? Kelly?
No.
It was her motion.
Yes.
Three to that motion pass.
I would like to make the motion to adopt a similar motion for the middle school, but make that grade level.
Well, that's why I'm like so confused. You guys already had I'm looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Did you, were you guys able to hear Forrest's motion?
Yes.
Okay, he's looking for a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So I have Jen, Christina, and Forrest with a yes. And Jessica?
No.
And Kelly?
No.
What's happened? Are there any other motions on it for tonight?
I just, I don't understand, I mean, we voted to do opt, it ended up being optional, but now we have how many cases in the middle school, these kids are gonna be wearing masks for the next ten days? I don't get, I don't
Hear your question, Kelly, I'm sorry.
Seven, pretty much.
Nothing.
Again, I think it's important to talk about temporary, we want temporary solutions to try to figure out, we're trying to compromise. And um, I, I, I'm trying to, we're trying to figure out the best ways to do that.
Because that's my concern, I guess my concern is, is that my, my concern is, is that everything that's temporary that we've had within this district has not stayed temporary. March, going back to school wasn't temporary, after Christmas vacation, we got a call, not temporary. And nothing stays temporary, and I'm gonna tell ya, my true feeling is, is that the cases are going up because vaccinated people are, are not thinking they can still get it, and the cases are spreading. Uh, the cases are not gonna go down, and if they do, then I'll admit I was wrong.
Revisit it again, our meeting um this mon, uh next month. Every month, we promised we would revisit the numbers and make adjustments, and I think that would be the appropriate time to change things if we wanna change them at that time.
Just a clarifying question with respect to buses. So, we have identified cases on buses, those students are in multiple classrooms and multiple grade levels. Are we quarantining a classroom of the students on the bus? Or are we, I, I'm just trying to, or are we trying to have everyone who was on the bus wear a mask for ten days?
Okay, so we're talking about stressing the teachers up, but look at what we're adding to it, alright, I'm gonna have
We had it, mask optional, that passed, and then a back door?
It's not a back door, we said it would be, listen, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna do this. We said it would be revisited. Said it would be revisited every meeting. Good night. Go ahead, Kelly.
So, I mean, didn't we just talk about that we were causing a lot of stress and extra work on the teachers?
So it's just gonna be nothing, 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 and that's nothing, I guess, so that's just how it works.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna make a, a motion that parents, do we still have that app that parents could like home monitor their child before they send them to school?
I have it on my phone, and I still get the emails.
To do that, like, we're not doing anything else but masking. Like, we need to be cleaning, we need to be spraying, we need to be having kids take and have to do that every morning before they come to school.
So I'll just speak to why it was discontinued, we certainly can reinstated if that's the will of the board, there is a cost to it, but what the district
My god.
The same people can continuously did not fill it out, and administration and nurses spent a lot of time chasing those same families. And there were still people coming to school sick, because people weren't necessarily truthful in filling out the app. So, we can certainly take that step, I have no issue with it, I just want you to understand why we made the decision not to do it this year. But, I mean, I
We did check temperatures of those that didn't do the screenings, didn't have any temperatures. Honestly, I feel like, just like this year, people were trying to keep the kids home if they were sick, so
I just don't know, like, that's a, that's a lot of people to take temperatures, like, how do you, how do you do that?
Is there a way?
It takes a lot of time unless you have a, you purchase a device. We used to do it just for the ones that didn't do the screening, so I would go around and I'd have a list who could do the screening, I'd check them, and then we'd call home to make sure of your symptoms were checked.
Thinking how we take it during SAS when we did off, off campus last year in SAS, but we also don't, we were always outdoors. So with us, we didn't have to do it right before they got into the school, so having a classroom teacher have a thermometer isn't gonna work either.
Right.
I think the thing is the measures we had in place were part of a larger plan. So the other, only part of the plan that was not adopted was the mask was a variation, but the plan in total was presented with that masks being, you know, for the green optional and, you know, kind of sliding, so I think, you know, it was that was the only difference that was presented to, to change in the plan. Uh, it wasn't said, don't do masks, but increase this and increase that.
Well, we have a meeting
Last year is also the quarantine, so last year, if there was a positive case in the classroom, all of those students and that teacher were quarantined and went home. Now, that student's quarantining and because, and maybe members of their family, but the rest of the students are coming in and we're like, ooh, hopefully got the email, you know, that, um, and taking extra precautions, but we don't know that, so I think that's a huge difference this year.
So, we have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, and I think that we really need to, between now and then, brainstorm of ideas of things that we can do besides putting a mask on, that we need to tighten up on, whether it be screening, um, cleaning, like, some, some options here. But, because obviously, we're a little lax this year compared to what, where we were last year, obviously, guidelines have dropped, different things. So, I think always rushing to put the mask on is not always the answer, I think we need to, you know, look into things a little further. I mean, I didn't, I didn't vote for, for a mask for all this, because I think there's, there's too many questions of, with this.
I, I didn't
So, i- i- it's just too many, but still not enough, like, there's still a lot of questions. I don't know, nothing's gonna be perfect, so if there's no other um motions for tonight, I, I think it's time to wrap it up.
Can I just explain why I, I voted what I did? So the reason I voted the way I did was because I feel like there hasn't been enough effort made into trying to make it work with masks optional. And that's how I feel, and I, I would hope that there would be more um in the next couple of weeks before our next meeting in an effort to try to maybe make more of an effort, so that, you know, we have more to go on.
I just wanted to briefly identify the prevention strategies that are in place. The DHHS toolkit has eleven of them. One is communicating with your community, I think the board has made a lot of attempts to do that, and administrators are sharing information. One is promoting vaccination, that's not available to our children under twelve. The third is face mask use, the fourth is to maximize physical distancing, the fifth is to cohort. The sixth is to consider implementing a screening testing program, all of those things are in place. Staying, having children stay home when sick and get tested, increasing ventilation to reduce stagnant indoor air. Again, that is also in place, performing fre, performing frequent hand hygiene and good respiratory etiquette. Cleaning and disinfecting, and again, cleaning once a day is usually enough to sufficiently remove potential virus that may be on surfaces. If a person with COVID nineteen was in your facility within the last twenty-four hours, then clean and disinfect spaces the person with COVID nineteen was in contact with. Those are being done, and partnering with public health to report all cases and manage household contacts. So, I'm not sure what else you're looking to have us do, we can take on anything. Our, our, our number one goal is to keep children in school, but I think we are checking all the boxes on the list, so I'm open to creative suggestions. But I think people are feeling like they're, they're, they're giving it their all, Kelly, and I don't, I don't know any staff or administrators who have been trying to, um, but, you know, work to get children sick, so that we could have a mask mandate put back in place. I think quite the opposite is true.
I didn't say that.
I know, but I think that's how people heard it, I'm, I can
Well, I'm sorry, but that's, I would never indicate, I would never make that assumption.
Thank you, um, I, there was something I was gonna say, but
Let's also continue to encourage to go outside too.
Yeah.
What we were talking about, I think, especially in the cases, if we have a case in a class and the class has to mask, let's try to do as much outside as possible, they don't need to wear a mask outside, that's what we've already determined.
So, I, I think from here on out, we're just gonna urge parents, please keep your kids home when they're sick, don't send them to school, because it just makes more issues for other kids that are not sick and trying to keep them in school. And if we could please, like, minimize the emails, like, condense them, just so that does not, like, it, it just looks like there's quadruple or double the, the amount of cases than what they, there are, because there's a lot of, you know, the buses, this classroom, the this, the that.
Some of that is to not be able to identify the child.
Because if we say they're in this first grade class, this bus in the morning and the, and SaaS in the afternoon, people could figure out who that kid is.
Yeah.
They're gonna figure, way when they're not in school.
Well, at this, at this point, if, if somebody in a classroom has, has, has a positive, they're gonna have to go to, go to school with a mask on. So I don't.
Yeah.
I mean.
You've just.
Kind of, right? So, I, I mean, that's. I don't know. If we could just try to maybe condense.
We'll do our best. If SaaS, SaaS does their own notifications typically, I think, because they have.
I think that's where some of the overlap comes from though, because for the same kids that are in SaaS, then you get the double bits. And I do get what you're saying. And I, I do because you're trying to, I, I actually thought about that afterwards as a kid. It'd be really easy to triangulate with this kid who's right here. But Erin, you made a good point too. If a kid is positive, they're gonna be the ones gone from the class. Their kid, their friends are gonna be there. So they're sort of gonna be identified. Anyway, so it, it's, I don't know. I don't have the answer for that.
Well, I just think it's kind of like, when, alright, so when a child in a, a second grade class, one class has COVID, do you send that, that email to everybody in the elementary school that there's a case in that one class? Or do you just send it to that class? It's hard for me to know because I don't have children in the school, so I'm getting them all. So I guess that's what I'm trying to like figure out. I know for me, it's like, so many, yeah.
We send it to that one class and say, um, a child in your child's classroom, your child's first grade classroom.
Okay.
Has COVID. And then they're getting a bus letter. And we're just sending one bus letter, not both of us. Um, so if it has elementary and middle school students on it, we're sending one letter to say there were two cases.
Okay.
Typically, if it's going to both schools, it's one elementary and middle.
Alright, so if there is nothing else, I would like to adjourn. Is there anything else from the board? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everybody, for coming. And being patient.